Twenty minutes.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Today is the Town Council regular meeting, Wednesday, February 1st, 2023, at 8:00 AM. Town Hall Green Room. Can we all stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two, are there any visitors that would like to be recognized? Any visitors that would like to be recognized? Hearing none, we will go on to number three, which is the approval of minutes from the January 18th, 2023 meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Item number four, appointments and reappointments. So the first one is Brett Martin for the Conservation Commission for a term until 6/30/2024. Do we have a motion to approve or to appoint?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Conversation? Comments?
According to the Conservation Commission page, that's a green seat.
It's not necessarily, because so these are appointed, so it's not necessarily by party. All we have to do is meet the majority.
I thought that was part of the policy, that it was by party?
No.
Okay. I don't know anything about Brett Martin, and he's not here, so.
I don't either. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Raise his hand.
Abstained? Okay. Item number two, which is the Mark Elvin appointment, we will not be addressing this as Lynn Heideck has rescinded her resignation, and she wants to remain on the Police Commission until the end of her term. So that one we don't have to do. Gail Henrik, unaffiliated for the Board of Ethics, for a term until 6/30/2025. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Next is Terry Clark, Democrat for the Historic District Commission, alternate seat until 6/30/2023. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Again, I don't know Terry Clark, and she's not here, so it's difficult to vote. The policy, I'd like to discuss that policy.
Okay, we can discuss it down the road.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. And the last one is the Coastal Resiliency Task Force, which we discussed at our last meeting. So Carl has put together some information as it relates to this, because this is going to have to start, we discussed it and talked about putting together a task force and having people appointed to this, so this is obviously the first step, so that we can kind of review this and see if anybody has any comments or questions on this.
This is just a draft, so I'd be looking to put what you feel is appropriate for membership, gave you a scope and a purpose, which dovetails with the regional effort for coastal resiliency in the grant that we have with Westbrook and Old Saybrook. So there's a regional component to working with that effort, as well as the local effort to put some policy direction to help other boards and commissions, particularly the Marine Corps boards. So I sort of gave it as one appointee from the major boards, supported by ex officia staff, got some seats there for stakeholders, marinas, and beach associations, people associated with coastal economy. I wasn't sure how wide a net you wanted to cast, if you wanted to include members of the general public, so you'd have to upsize the membership of the committee if you wanted to go further. So this was just submitted to get a reaction out of the council for where you wanted to go with it.
Comments?
I think you did a great job with this outline, Carl. It's thorough, it hit on everything that I could think of you'd want to look at and appreciate in this topic. It's a huge topic, absolutely huge, and this would be a committee that would be going on well into the future, no doubt. So whoever wants to sign up, raise your hand now.
Is that the question? Two of us have much to...
Well, I mean, I think we also, first we have to, how many people?
You have to approve this.
Yeah.
What your membership desire is, and then you'd be looking for your own representative, and then we have to go out and ask the individual boards and commissions to give us somebody to...
So you're just looking for approval for this?
I'm looking for feedback more than anything.
Well, that's my feedback.
I mean, I think mostly in the membership and term section, are we all comfortable? Obviously, he's got a couple different numbers here, so we want to figure out about the membership as far as that goes, and then who, obviously, like you discussed, like Carl discussed, whether or not we want to put somebody from the public on here, because we do have boards and commissions. So I think those are the things that we have to discuss to kind of come to an agreement on that.
And Carl, the boards and commissions you've chosen to be represented, I assume that those are the same in the other towns. That's what other people are doing, and so we're going to use the same boards?
No.
Oh, okay.
These are entities that would have some role in what would be ultimate policy as it relates to any kind of coastal resiliency strategy. So the council is the major policy board and would be the entity to talk about funding. Planning and zoning would come from a regulatory standpoint, conservation comes from a conservation standpoint, harbor management has an interest in the harbor, and obviously, that's part of coastal resiliency, sustainability, resiliency is a general theme with that group, and then stakeholders from the coastal economy and beach association. So it's just sort of trying to put together a tight committee that would have people that would have to ultimately play some kind of a role on implementation, so that it does not something that where the council just discusses it, and then it doesn't go anywhere from a policy implementation standpoint beyond what the council does.
And so this would be working with a professional consultant, so there'd have to be, and there's a, isn't there a $10,000 funding for this going?
So there's a grant for this?
A grant, okay.
So that that individual is working at the regional level, but will also provide local support also.
Yeah, because it'd be hard to get anything done without a professional.
You would have the professional through the grant mechanism. That's something we have to...
So would this committee be meeting with the other towns in conjunction, or meeting individually, I mean separately, and then coming together at the end of the day?
Most of it would be meeting separately. Somebody from this group would then go up to the regional meetings, I think that's bullet point two, to go up and work at the regional level to see what the other towns are talking about and bring that information back. So everybody is putting in one person from their town for that conversation. So we would put in our one person.
Okay, thank you.
Abby has been involved, talking with the other planners and the other communities, so she would continue as a staff role, so.
I would suggest then that with your recommendations, that the committee, in the beginning, be comprised of five individuals, the five individuals you named with the two alternates to that committee, and no restrictions on the two alternates, they could be from the street or whatever. But I think the five you've chosen, as Carol pointed out, more or less cover all the major departments that have got to have some type of play in the future with this coastal resiliency.
But it would be seven if you added in a marina owner and somebody from the beach association.
That's what I'm saying. I don't think that's necessary at this time, Carol, I'm just saying, the five individuals that are from representing the five committees, boards and commissions at this period, and then two alternates, and the alternates could be a boat marina or...
I don't know, I kind of think they're the ones with the most skin in the game, you know. I always, personally, I'm relying on Cedar Island Marina to do something about keeping my house from being underwater eventually. I would think that they would be very critical. I would, I would like to see seven members, particularly because I'd like to see a marina owner and a beach association in there, because they're the ones who deal with the immediate effects.
I have no...
And they've seen what has occurred in the last 10 years.
I have no difference against, so you're saying seven regular members and then two alternates in addition?
Yep.
That's fine by me. Fine by me. If you can find two people that will step up.
Right.
That's the problem.
Right. Well, they're the ones who are, I mean, I don't know about anybody else but my insurance, because I'm within 2,500 feet of the water, went up a lot this year, so.
Sure. I mean, your motion, go ahead.
Yeah, that works for me.
Anything else that we want to include or change or anything else?
No. I mean, I changed my motion in to propose that it be a seven permanent member committee with everything that has been suggested there. These five individuals and two others that will be from boat owners or whatever, plus two alternates. That's my motion.
Second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So when will we work on staffing or putting these members together?
Yeah, I'll reach out to the boards to get them to get some feedback, and then...
Okay.
You guys would have to appoint them anyways.
All right.
So they don't come back.
Yeah. No, I just thought as far as this board, I am not...
You don't wait to think about it.
We also have to actually make a motion to approve the draft as written. All we really discussed was the membership committee.
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Discussion?
Chris.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Item number five, which is the appropriation request for Park and Recreation Study, this revolves around the ARPA funding workshops that we've had and the discussions in relation to the pickleball courts, and coming to a conclusion that we would put money out there, take money from ARPA in order to do a study, to study all the recreational facilities in town. Do we have a motion to approve the $10,000?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you.
Chris, I hate to interrupt, but to discuss that policy, shall I wait for council discussion?
Yep.
Okay.
Item number six, local prevention council grant application.
This is a standard grant the town's received for a number of years. Charter requires grants to go through the council before they're applied for, so this is relatively small amount at $4,000, but important for pick. So we just need council approval so that the application can go in.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Item number seven, which is the Public Works line item transfer request, we have a transfer request for 591372. Nobody's here, so we're just basically, due to price increase, a standard was not purchased, looking to close out finished capital projects to fund. So that was the reason for the transfer. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Item number eight, chairman's report. So as obviously, I'm assuming everybody knows Christine has resigned from the town council, so we thank her for her time and years of service that she gave to the council, and looking forward, obviously, to a new addition to the council, and that we can continue to work in together as a group and would continue to move everything forward. So other than that, I have nothing else on chairman's report, so we will move to town manager's report.
So you have my written report, highlights from that one. Obviously, the budget is consuming the majority of time and activity of what goes on in preparation of delivering a document to you guys in February. We're all keen to see what the governor's budget comes out with for grants and aid. The governor's budget has traditionally constituted the floor of what we could expect, because the state takes longer to adopt the budget than we do, so it's good budget practice to see what comes out, and it helps frame our discussions early on. The EDC is moving forward with ratifying goals that they've, they're going to adopt. Again, ultimately, I think that will come to the council for some kind of presentation. At the last meeting of the River Cog, there's a presentation from DOT staff on a study they're doing on I-95, which is to look at the stretch from Branford to the Rhode Island Line. Traffic volumes are higher than it was originally built for, there's congestion, I think we all kind of know on the weekends, especially during the summer, it's kind of tight to maneuver. So they're looking at what could be potential design options to adjust in order to have greater carrying capacity on 95. So the public hearing or virtual public meeting was held previously, they're working on design alternatives which would be presented to the towns that would be affected, and then something later in the year for a public presentation. If you've gone 95 towards New York, you'll note that there are a few areas where there were widenings off 95 to pick up a third lane, some bridge abutments were pushed back in order to squeeze those additional lanes in so that they could get adding, added carrying capacity going into Stamford. It would not be unusual to expect something of that magnitude here, but it was also noted that the off-ramps are short on this end, so then you wind up having cars stack out onto the highway, and I think we know that here from Black Friday and the influence of the outlet mall. So that's something else that's perhaps a little unique and different. Union negotiations are gearing up across a number of the bargaining units, so as the budget gets put to bed, union contract negotiations will start to be more time-consuming. The landfill capping project, at your next meeting, I anticipate bringing to you a request for additional engineering work associated with, a new permit that we understand DEEP is suggesting would be helpful in expediting the review of our permit request. The approach that we're following puts us third in line, so Plainville was first, West Hartford was second, and we're third. Plainville took a year to get theirs approved by DEEP. The drawings, other than being site-specific differences, aren't very different between Plainville, West Hartford, and Clinton. West Hartford wants to have theirs approved faster than one year, and DEEP staff suggested there's an additional permit form that would help, I guess, their process to move it along in faster than one year. So I'll be bringing you a request to fund engineering work associated with that additional permit in order to, you know, make sure that we can dovetail behind West Hartford's process and let them be the ones who learn from what it takes to speed up DEEP. Additional information that's not included in the report, in the past, I reported on the regional housing plan, that was part of the cog effort, council approved the town's component of that previously. So baked into the regional component of it was the creation of a regional housing committee that would be part of the cog. It was meant to be a voluntary committee, so it was, we didn't have to join if we didn't want to join. The idea would be a regional group that would discuss housing issues, people would bring in their perspectives on what the individual housing issues were in their own towns, and then this group would help put together with cog support materials and educational materials that would help towns navigate housing issues, giving them a toolbox, for lack of a better word, to help address housing issues. So the cog is going through a process of updating its bylaws, which creates this committee, and so we're getting to the point of asking the question of whether towns want to participate and who they want to be in the, be the representative for the town. So I'm not looking for action today. Think about it, but it is a request that's being asked now, because we're moving into the implementation phase. Also, information for your general awareness, it's been reported already that we've gotten two opioid settlement payments made to the town as part of the national effort at litigating the impacts of opioids. There's another tranche of settlements being approved, this not coming from manufacturers, but more pharmacies. So there'll be more paperwork to fill out going into February in order to have the town opt into those settlements and get those one-time payments, which, up to this point, have been restricted to dealing with opioid-related issues, so that would be a police-related program or a human services-related program. So there'll be more to come on that front. And we did issue our bond anticipation notes. Cost of the money is, it's no longer free money, so we're up at the 3% benchmark, which historically has been a good number to be at. Going into the market, a number of towns had been out with deals and came in at 4% or 6%, so to get a 3% is good, it's a good hallmark of quality for Clinton, that we got that level of interest and at that favorable an interest rate. I think the downside is, because we're dealing with rates that we haven't historically seen, you'll see that flush out in the budget with debt service being a little bit higher than what it's been in the past. That's it.
Questions?
About the I-95, sorry. Are they doing anything about, are they considering noise as well?
Noise is not part of the mix, it's just carrying capacity of the road. I don't think you're going to see noise barriers going up.
Carl, is there any update on the Pearson RFP?
As I noted, last time, I got feedback from the development community, which requires me to rethink how I had structured it to address your desire for cake and eat it too. There was a little bit of pushback that that kind of didn't make a lot of sense, so I have to restructure how I did it. But since the budget has deadlines that are very specific, I have to focus on the budget first.
Anybody else? All right, thank you, Carl. Item number 10, council discussions. Anybody?
Yes. First, I'd like to say that I was, with this annual report, I was very happy with the growth of the grand list. That was great. Something like 9.3%, if I do the math correctly. That's good news. As far as the other issue, I've been concerned with all the information we're getting from the town political committees. They feel that they're being cut out. I feel, sitting at the table, that we're not getting the information that we need. According to the policy, which looks like a solid policy that you unanimously passed in 2021 or '22, number six states that we should be getting information, background information, from the town committees. That would be something that I would really like to have. I mean, never having heard of these people who are coming up, I don't think is good policy. I don't care for it at all. Another thing that really disturbs me, and I didn't quite understand why until yesterday when I remembered, to rescind a, Lynn rescinding her resignation. That seemed weird. And then I remembered that I advocated for the poet Laureate in 2021, who also tried to rescind her resignation and was told no. I think, how do we treat people differently?
You didn't treat anybody differently, the poet Laureate.
So how does that work out?
The poet Laureate, effective immediately. Lynn had a...
But then she wrote.
It was after her...
It was after her effective date of resignation.
She has resigned immediately, then wanted to rescind it after she had already resigned. In this particular case, and you'll note, the effective date of the term for Police Commission was the 14th, the resignation letter you received said her resignation would be effective the 13th. So the vacancy hadn't occurred. In this case, poet Laureate, the vacancy had occurred.
So should that be somewhere in writing? That's a distinctive difference, and that's a good difference to know. I certainly feel better about knowing that policy.
In writing order.
I just think that that's a policy worth noting. I'll certainly note it, but, so you have not resigned until that date goes into effect?
I mean, I think anybody, I don't know who wouldn't know that.
I didn't.
Quite honestly.
I didn't.
The majority of resignations are typically effective immediately. That's the usual and standard of what you get.
Got it. All right. But Lynn resigned, got it. Okay, I understand.
She put you on notice of resignation, but the effective date would not have been until February 13th.
Okay, all right, understood. I did not understand that. But back to that RTC DTC information, I'd really like to be furnished with more information. People don't show up, we're supposed to vote for them, I know nothing about them. We didn't even receive applications for two of them, did we?
Yeah, we did. They wouldn't be on, they wouldn't be on here unless we received an application.
I must admit that, okay. But there's scanned information on there, and I would like more.
Okay.
How do you feel about it?
We certainly can make a note that they have to attend the meeting in which they'll be appointed or reappointed, and that way, actually, more so appointed than reappointed, but when they're appointed, so that if we have questions, we can address those questions. So we can make a note of that, they do have to show up when they are on the agenda.
And Chris, what about number six? I'm sorry, do you have the policy in front of you?
I do.
I did, okay.
Okay, this policy, just so you know how this policy came about, so when the first council was seated, we had a green member, so Eric Bergman won a seat. So the conversation turned to, in this town, it was Democrats and Republicans, that's all it was, everybody would have to go to their political party, they had the say, actually, in kind of who could and couldn't be on a board or commission. So to me, that seemed kind of, I technically maybe had a little bit of a problem that as well, on why the political party had the last say in kind of who got appointed. So as the council members, we obviously, at this point, then had the final say in appointing and reappointing these, and these are only for appointed, these aren't for elected. So these are appointed positions only, this has nothing to do with an elected official. So these are appointed. So then it became, well, how does somebody then on a green party be able to get into a board or commission? Because if the Democrat resigns or the Republican resigns, they have the ability to replace their own. That was, that wasn't a policy, it was just procedure throughout town throughout the years. If one of your parties left the board or commission, you got to reappoint somebody of like party. So now we have a green party member, he's asking me, how do we get people on boards and commissions? It would have been completely impossible to put a green party individual on any board or commission, because how would they get appointed to that board or commission if we were replacing with like? So that was the reason why we discussed the policy and how to get more people, number one. Number two, changing the charter, and the charter then indicating, in the past, we had some people and some members from the political parties that were on five boards and commissions, and served on every board and commission in town, the new charter revision then limited how many you could be on, so then at that point, how many people then do we really, we need to open it up more so that anybody could. So it was agreed upon that, and unaffiliated, and independent, you know, anybody from anybody, if they lived in town and they wanted to serve on a board or commission, they should have the ability to serve on a board or commission. And that's how the policy came about, and that's why the policy was written. Yes, in the past, was there a, there wasn't a policy, but a standard way of doing, you know, doing things is that you would go to that political party. The problem then becomes, the political party itself then says, well, we want that person to come to us. Well, does everybody know that? Does everybody in town know that if they submit their name online, and they're from a specific political party, that they have to go and ask a political party, you know, it's like you're asking them if it's okay for you to serve on a board or commission? So... So personally, if somebody wants to serve on a board or commission in this town, I would like us to vet that person, quite honestly. I would like that person to sit in front of us, and we can rattle off the questions that we may have for that individual. So then we're not limiting it to just a Democrat, a Republican, a Green. We're opening it up. We're giving everybody in this town the ability to serve on a board or commission, which I think is what we need to do, because I've heard from a lot of people, well, I want to serve. Well, I don't want to be part of the RTC. I get it. Why should you? You shouldn't have to be part of the RTC in order to serve on a board or commission. You should be somebody who lives in town and would like to serve, and that's it. So that's how the policy came about. So I'm with you on bringing that person here, that individual, if you want to be appointed to a seat for the first time, that you come in front of the council. If the council has the authority to make that final decision, then why wouldn't we be asking the questions, as opposed to a political party? Because I think the other side of this was taking politics out of everything and try to eliminating that and being able to get a broader base of people that can come forth for these positions.
The only thing I would add, that's a great explanation, and I agree with everything you said. And I understood, I thought, when I read through it, I thought that was probably the motivation. A, open it up, and B, there was a point in time where we had tons of open positions. The only thing I have a little issue with is if they fill out the application and they say they're a Democrat, and we've never even heard of them, the DTC's never heard of them. So they're going in as a Democrat. And then, let's just say they turn out to be a bad assignment. Then, you know, then it's a Democrat that's in that position that's doing that, and you say, well, you know, you guys should have vetted him, you know? So I would just say, maybe we put a note in there that says, you can go in as an independent anytime you want, or whatever. But if you do go in at one of the party affiliations, you have to, you know, talk to the party first. That would be my only caveat to that.
Or, Chris, if it weren't talking to the party, that we communicate to the party that that person is coming up? And let the party do their vetting. It doesn't hurt to have another layer. They don't have to go to the DTC or the RTC. The RTC simply has their name, and they can get in touch with them. I know that's semantics, but just the more vetting, the better. I hate those people to come up in front of me. First of all, they're not here. And then I have no, I, we can't ask them.
Well, I mean, again, go ahead, Dennis.
I would like to start with at least bringing the people here. I think it's mandatory for new appointments to be here. I agree with that 100%. I think we should start with that premise right off the bat. So at least we get a chance, as you say, Carrie, to ask questions of these individuals and vet them. I have a little bit of resistance to having people come and report to a committee. RTC, I'm Republican, and, but I have a little residency. Some people are a little shy. And, I mean, first of all, they're going to have to go to like, a group of RTC people and present, this is why I'm here, blah, 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 blah. Then they're going to have to come to us, this is why I'm here, blah, 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 blah. You know, I would like to start with us, because Chris says we're the ultimate authority. And at this point, I would feel comfortable with that. Because I know there are a lot of people that, quite frankly, I'll be frank about it as possible, they don't really want to talk to the RTC or the DTC. I've been around this town, it's 1966. Sometimes there's bad feelings, sometimes there's this. Quite frankly, I would think that the policy that we put in when we did is probably the most unprejudiced policy we've put in in 30, 40 years. Because I've seen it. I've seen where if somebody doesn't really get along with some of the members of the RTC, they're going to ostracize them. And I'm sure it's happened on your side. Let's be frank about it. We know that personalities come into this. So I'd like to at least eliminate that little fear, if you will, or intrepidation on a person. Let's bring them to us. That's going to be bad enough for some of these people in the first place, just to come to us, to bare their souls, if you will, and say, you know, this is why I'm here, blah, blah. I know I probably would have had that back 40, 35 years ago, whenever it got started. So I know I would have been, you know? But I agree with you that we should know a little bit more about these individuals. So that's my stance. I don't mind.
Yeah, no, I agree with Dennis. I think the thought of them having to report in to a committee meeting, a town committee meeting, just adds an extra layer. If they wanted to be involved with the town committee, they would do that. They would go to the meetings, they'd raise their hands for that. They just want to, they see this as paying it forward. They just want to be on a committee that interests them clearly, or they wouldn't. But I do think it should be mandatory that they have to come to the meeting at which they're asking to be appointed, because that is critical. That's been a deciding factor several times that I can recall. So it's a good idea to add that to the...
Carl, what do we have to do to sort of insert that in the policy?
I think what we can do is tell the person that's submitted the online application that to be considered, you're going to have to come to a meeting, and they will not even be on the agenda. I guess the message delivered to them is you're not going to be on the agenda until you do appear at a town council meeting. And just one quickly, so as far as the whole vetting and everything else, I think, like, it is, it's an extra layer, but it's also an extra layer that ultimately, if we're deciding, then basically, we should have the questions asked. Because what if somebody goes to the RTC and the RTC committee, or whomever does the vetting over there, says, you know, we don't like this guy or this woman. We don't like you. But you know what? Maybe you talk to a person, and, you know, they call you up and they say, hey, listen, and you start talking to that person, you know, maybe you are the right person for the position. You know? And that's, again, would be another reason for some people to say, you know what, I'm not going to deal with all this. Why do I got to go to two different places to be approved in order to be on a board or commission? Because if the ultimate decision-making process per the charter falls to the town council, that person should be here, completely agree with that, and be able to answer questions that the council members have, any council member. So, I mean, that would be one way, I guess, that we can handle the situation of them making sure they show up and making sure that they won't be, and, I mean, that message can be delivered, we received your application. You know, again, you need to appear at a town council meeting prior to you being appointed.
And it could very well happen that had Lynn not rescinded her resignation, there would have been two people here to talk to us.
Well, that's, but that's different, too. That's an elected position. That's an elected position. That has nothing to do with what we're discussing here.
Let's say appointments. It is possible that there is, there are a couple of candidates who come before us for one seat, right?
Absolutely. Yeah, that's what we're saying. And that's fine. I don't, I mean, that's, I think, the ultimate when we discussed this policy, was that, yes. Because then somebody else comes in and we say, hey, listen, now, maybe not here, but hey, listen, there's another opening on this, would this interest you? So there are other ways for us to engage people to be involved and then hopefully be able to, like Chris said, I mean, look at the blue book. It's a lot of empty seats out there. You know, alternates, you know, I mean, and it's not limited to any one particular party. It's everybody across the board.
In the application process, is it necessary we tell them what the party affiliation is?
Yes, because minority, majority...
I'm talking, for the appointed positions...
Oh, when they come to talk?
Yeah.
Oh. Well, I mean, at some point, we'd have to know, but I see what you're saying, so that we don't even know what they are when they come here.
For party affiliations. You have to know if there is a vacancy...
If the board requires a, doesn't allow a supermajority, I agree with you.
Right.
But if it doesn't, does Park and Rec require a supermajority by party?
Yes. Every appointed committee does. Yeah. Board and commission, by committees, board or commission.
No, I understand. Okay.
So, yes, it all has to be according to party majority.
Which automatically eliminates independents or a Green party.
Not really.
Why?
Well, they still can serve. It's just, it's the majority.
You just couldn't have, for instance...
What if you have a majority of independents?
Well, then they won't, they wouldn't be able to be seated to that board or commission.
Interesting question. That would be...
Unaffiliated.
Four unaffiliateds on the town council, yeah.
On the list of vacancies, it doesn't mention party. Is that the way it should be? The list of vacancies on the town website, I don't believe it mentions party.
I think it does, most of the time.
The blue book has it.
If you scroll, if you go into the boards and commissions, you'll see the...
But the list of vacancies doesn't, so, okay.
Anybody else? Okay. So I guess we're in agreement, that's how we'll proceed with the new appointments.
Could we send a letter to the chairs of the DTC, Green Party, RTC? And let them know? Or do you feel that the letter that you sent is explanation enough?
What would you want the letter to say to them, like it...
Well, the letter that you sent in response about the policy, is, does that hold? Is that enough? We intend to vet, didn't you send a letter?
I sent the policy. A copy of the policy.
Got it, yeah.
Because I, I mean, again, I don't think, I mean, I thought maybe most people knew, but if they didn't...
I think they're an important role, the RTC/DTC chair, whatever. I think it's an important part of our town, and I think that they should, we should respect them.
Oh, I agree. I mean, I don't think we, listen, this policy wasn't put into place to just, you know, take anything away from anybody or say that you didn't know what you're doing, so we're going to take it over. Had nothing to do with that. It had to do with initially, the Green Party, and then, you know, Eric having a conversation about how do I get Green Party on boards and commissions? Because it's completely impossible, because every board and commission in town has either a Democrat or Republican. So if a Democrat leaves, then a Democrat's replaced. If a Republican leaves, a Republican's replaced. How does a Green Party get involved?
And unaffiliated.
And unaffiliated. And any political party.
That was the main goal, too.
That was kind of my question, that Brett's spot was a Green spot. That's why I, but you said that...
But so once somebody leaves, again, you have to meet those majority-minority rules that you have to meet.
So the Green Party can disappear.
They can. I mean, if they decided that they didn't want to fill that position, then yeah. So...
Okay.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? No? Good. All right, move on to item number 11, town council.
Can I, I have one last thing, a council discussion. The ARPA funds, if the designation, designated recipient doesn't use up the funds by 2026, or say, 2025, and clearly isn't going to use up the funds, I mean, if you ask them and they're done, can that money be reallocated?
Yes.
Okay.
You've already done that in one particular case.
And when do, do you have an idea of when that discussion would happen? Would that be a year in advance of that time? Or six months? Or, because it's got to be, if it's, we use it or lose it...
The money has to be spent by December 31st, 2026. And then it needs to be allocated, budgeted, by 12/31/2025.
Okay. Oh, all right. Okay.
Looking at it later in this calendar year would make some sense to get a gauge of, are you going to spend it all? Are you done? In some cases, projects are done. And then the last list I gave you was recommending moving some money from a done project to funding something new.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Pretty good?
Yep.
All right. Item number 11, town council committee liaison reports. Anybody have anything to report?
Look at this.
I got a report.
Chris, we were so close.
I went to the Board of Ed meeting, and they are discussing, Mary Ann proposed her budget to the board. And so I have a copy of her PowerPoint, but, you know, basically, she's taken our number that we gave her pretty seriously for the, we gave her a 2.5% number as a, you know, placeholder in the dark, but a good number that we thought was something that we could possibly agree on. So her operating number at this point is 2.93. And so there, she is making cuts. You know, she went through all the cuts, and she's been cutting some operating staff, two FTEs are down. So, you know, I don't know, you know, if you guys have any initial feelings on this that I could go back to them and say, well, here's sort of what the council's thinking. You know, I'm not really here to defend it or anything.
The 2.93% increase, is that based on last year's budget, or the last year's actually spent budget? Because if you remember, they didn't spend $750,000.
Yep. I don't know the answer to that.
Which is about 2% by the way.
Yeah. I don't know.
They wouldn't start at a, at a, an artificial level. They wouldn't start with what they actually used. They would start with that figure that they were originally given.
Her increase refers to last year's budget as approved?
It just says, it says total request for operating is the 35.5. Amount change is basically 1 million, and that's 2.93. But I don't know if that change, where that change is coming from.
Right. Now, you said the, what was it, 30.9?
35.5.
But they actually spent, what, 34.8?
Well, this is this year, so this is the total.
We're going to go through all this anyway, so she'll get us that PowerPoint. But, I mean, at least that's, we have a starting point, obviously.
Yeah. Just something to think about. And I don't think Mary Ann would want me being the one that tries to defend all these numbers. But just giving you an idea of what they said, and so you guys can start the process and if you have anything that says, hey, I don't, you know, I don't like that, or, you know, something for her to think about, I can tell her.
Hey, I don't like that.
You knew that was coming. All right, we're going to move on quick.
Yeah.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay.
Anybody else? All right, here and done. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right. Thank you.